Are you ready, guys? Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, August 1st, 2016. This is the City Council Work Session, and I want to welcome all of you here, and Matt, we're going to have you up there in a second. At this particular time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. So here we go. Are you guys ready? This is our last and final presentation of an opportunity to promote Watertown. Matt, if you recall, he was our first presenter from Retail Strategies, and we had him Skyped in, and he just felt as though he needed the opportunity, and I think it's true, that you needed the opportunity to come here and show the council what you've got. And if you can shut your radios off, please. No, I'm kidding. I thought it was you, Beth.
It's the radio guy.
All right. So Matt, come on up and grab a chair and tell everybody who you are, and welcome to Watertown. And there's a little button right on your speaker there that you can push. The light's green, you're ready to go.
There we go. Can y'all hear me fine? Perfect. Well, thank y'all so much for having me here today. My name is Matthew Petrow. I'm the Chief Development Officer at Retail Strategies. I'm very excited to present what we do for municipalities to you. I know I spoke, I guess it was June 1st, which I'm not going to act like you remember everything that I said. Certainly, you've had a couple other firms come in here, so I'm going to try not to rehash too much, but really just want to open up and make this a dialogue of a back-and-forth of the opportunities that I see in your market and what you all want to see happen from a retail development perspective. So obviously, first, thank you for the opportunity to be here. So what I did was I took the privilege of looking up your sales tax, what you retained from the municipal level, and what I found online was 2%, which I'm pretty sure is correct. You never know when it's online. But this is a retail recruitment ladder at 2% based upon a rough average of retail. So if you look at the top line here, you know, a Walmart or a Target projects to do about $40 million in sales, add 300 jobs to the community and to the city of Watertown, that would be about $800,000 in sales tax revenue that's collected and kept on the local level. And then if you go down to the bottom, even a Mo's Southwest Grill, which I know there's one down in Sioux Falls, that's Mo's started in Atlanta, Georgia, in the backyard of where I'm from in Birmingham, Alabama, and even that's going to project to do about $1 million in sales, add 15 jobs, and add about $20,000 to the city's local option sales tax collections. So that's a huge reason for the community to invest in retail, not only that, but to continue to be the major trade hub to really about 125,000 to 150,000 people that use Watertown to buy their goods and services. One of the key things that's happened is that millennials have become the largest consumer demographic, meaning millennials want their goods and services immediate, and they want to control their time. So you think about restaurants, they're expanding right now. It's not Red Lobster and Outback that is expanding, it's Chipotle, it's Jimmy John's, it's these restaurants where you can walk in and have the sit-down service. You don't have a sit-down service, but you have the sit-down atmosphere, but you're controlling your time and you're not paying a tip. So a family of four that's eating out at a Five Guys Burgers and Fries pays $8 a meal, but they're not leaving a tip, so you're saving about 15 or 20% on your purchase there. But what's happened also is that the iPhone has really taken the place of a lot of goods and services that you used to go get. If you think about Office Depot and Office Max, you can see on this list about five or six items that you would used to have to have separately, but you can now do all on your smartphone. So because of all this, retailers are having to be more exact with what they're doing. They're becoming more data-driven, and that's where we come in. So Retail Strategies, we currently employ 30 individuals. There's two that we have hired in the past week. One has been a broker for seven years, the other, which has worked in municipal government for five years, that has come in and added to our team, but our background is in commercial real estate. We have been site selectors, we have been tenant reps, we have been developers, so we know the obstacles. We know retailers across the country. We have 180-plus years collectively of experience within our company, and collectively, the members of our team have helped locate retailers in 44 states, and that's not Retail Strategies. That's before they entered into our company that we were able to accomplish those things. So when you partner with us, you're not partnering with data guys, you're partnering with people that are very tight-knit within the retail real estate industry and can get your materials in front of the people that need to see it. So the goals of our partnership are pretty simple. We want to increase the sales tax revenues, we want to attract the desire businesses that are not going to cannibalize the current businesses that are in the community, but they're going to maximize the opportunities in the market to improve the overall quality of life and then to, obviously, create jobs within the community. But again, at Retail Strategies, it's not about what we're going to give you. You guys have seen two other presentations from firms that provide great research, and they provide a great product. But at the end of the day, research, you can go online and license all the information that we do. It'll cost you a pretty penny, but you could do it if you wanted to. So it's not about the deliverables, it's about the service. It's about locking arms with the community and becoming your partner. That's what we want to do. We want to become invested in this community so that we can tell your story. The mayor and I have been hanging out for the past three and a half hours going around the community and have spoken with individuals, and what you have is an incredible story, walking into the university, walking into Dugan's and talking to Jim about his sales and what's going on, and hearing what he thinks the market needs and what the market doesn't need. Going to Charlie's, which I looked up, it's an incredible facility. The theater upstairs is gorgeous. But I looked online at Yelp, because I've got to eat tonight, and so I looked online at Yelp to see what was going on and what the hot spots were. Charlie's had a five-star rating, and I read the comments, somebody waited 40-plus minutes and gave it a five-star rating. So what that tells me is that that wait is going to lead to other entrepreneurial opportunities as well as retail opportunities in the downtown, because you have people that are standing outside, and the same reason that a McDonald's and a Burger King will locate on the same road is that another restaurant's going to come in, which I believe it's a sushi restaurant that's going across the street, that if somebody's waiting, they say, "Well, let's go check out that restaurant instead of waiting here." So it's all going to feed off one another and create a critical mass that is going to be good for the community. So our process starts with market analysis, taking the deepest dive into research that's available, bringing our team of retail real estate professionals to the market to analyze the market in the eyes of a retailer. What does a retailer see when they come to Watertown? What does a developer see? And then, obviously, taking into a community input. What do we need to stay away from recruiting to the market? Even though it's a fit, we don't want to put somebody out of business that's been in business for 105-plus years within the community. And then, we take those three inputs, we create a strategy, and then we put a team around the community to go out and execute that strategy on your behalf. And what's going to happen is your results. Whether that's good news or bad news, you're going to get results, meaning you're going to hear from a retailer that wants to be in the market, and we're going to hear from retailers that don't want to be in the market. But if they don't want to be in the market, we're going to know why. And we can either adjust what we're doing to try to meet their needs, or we can say, "Hey, this is where we need to build to." And a lot of times, we'll hear objections, and we can turn those around, but sometimes they give you a good reason why the market doesn't work for them right now. So we can learn from that, and we can figure out where we're going to go. But again, what we hope to have is the successes within the community. So the market analysis, I'm going to skip through this, we've already been over this. So what I did was I took a mobile data study for your community. So, mobile data study. The home location is where the phone sits idle during the evening. The work location is where the phone sits idle during the day. So that's how the locations are analyzed. It's not by zip area codes, it's through GPS within the phone, and it's accurate within 20 feet. It is scrambled so that you can't identify exactly where the home is to protect the consumer privacy. But as you can see on here, and I think how these blocks, so these blocks are pretty accurate when you're talking about defining a trade area. So the darker the block, the more people from that certain block that have shopped within, this was the Target from January 1, 2016, to this Saturday. So when you draw that, outline that, this is really what you get, which I think is pretty accurate. Certainly, this is a broad trade area, but these are the consumers who have come to the Target, and this is not drawing the entirety of it. There certainly was a couple of dots in Minneapolis, which I think is more than likely. They have family here, or there's some reason for them to come here to shop at that Target, because I know there's a Target in Minneapolis. So this is what I saw, and the result of that is about 180,000 population. So to me, that's probably your secondary trade area. That's not the primary trade area, but you certainly are drawing from these areas. Projected to grow 0.99%, so 2021's projected to be about 181,000. Median age of 38, which is good. Again, that 38's going to be right on that millennial demographic, which is what the retailers are looking for. And then the household income of about 50,000 for that much space is a very good household income level. So it's a great story to tell already with just the basic demographics. So the psychographic analysis, again, it's demographic shorthand. It's telling you a lot about the consumer in a very concise manner, and your top psychographic analysis was all to newcomers, so these are, it jumped out to me, because it's metropolitan city dwellers. So when you look at Watertown on a map, you're not thinking metropolitan, but when you come here and you see the co-tenancy in the market, you do think that this is a bigger market than what it looks like on a map. So this was a very eye-opening thing to me, and when you see this map of where else these consumers are located across the country, it's good to see it go coast-to-coast. A lot of the tapestry segmentations are very regional, and what retailers want to do is they want to find the same thing in Atlanta, Georgia, as they find in Watertown, because that makes it easier for them to enter the market. They're more familiar with that type of consumer. So it's very good that your highest psychographic segmentation was one that is a national. A gap analysis, this was done for the entirety of that trade area, so these numbers are not incredibly accurate, and this is not something that I put on your desk and put my stamp on, but just to give you some perspective of what's going on within a few of these categories, furniture stores, grocery, clothing, sporting goods, department stores, restaurants, some of the opportunities that are within the community. One of the things about a gap analysis is that you do want to have a surplus in restaurants, because that means you've reached a critical mass where you have more people coming here to eat than going away to eat. So what that tells other restaurants is, "I'm going to come feed off of that traffic." On the flip side, a grocery store, you can't go buy more apples just because another grocer opens up, you're not going to go buy more groceries. There's only a limited number that you're going to spend there, and you're probably not going to go too terribly far to get apples or oranges, things of that nature. So what I like to refer more to is a peer analysis, and again, this is me doing it for about three hours, not incredibly scientific, but when you look at Watertown versus the peer average, again, you can see here residential population, daytime population, household income, market supply, and GLA, we're looking at pretty much identical communities to Watertown. And I looked at three communities in particular. So this is a little difficult to read. Watertown is in the blue, and then you have Peer 1, Peer 2, and Peer 3. So when you look at these graphs, these are the number of retailers from those categories and how you stack up. So as you can see, arts and entertainment, there isn't any in Watertown, but one of your peer communities has two stores, and one of them has one. Clothing and accessories, you're lagging behind your peer communities. Same thing with apartment. Smoothie, not so much. I would say that's pretty much equivalent. Taking it further, it looks like you're overdeveloped, not overdeveloped, but you have a more full-service restaurants than your peers, which is, again, as we discussed, is a very good thing. Grocery and supermarket, this is saying that you could probably support one more. Continuing on, again, quick-service restaurants here, you have essentially relatively the same as your peers, but again, that's something that you can build on. So it's just taking you a step-by-step, but what we look at this for is to say, "Okay, we have the same number of sports and recreation stores that our peers do, but do they have somebody that we don't have?" Or if we go back to full-service restaurants, okay, we might have five, and our peers have two, three, and two, but what are those two? What are those three? What are those two? And find those brands. Yes?
The other peer communities, are they in the Midwest? Or do you have any?
Yes, oh goodness. That was a fantastic question, Mr. Robey. I should have said that to begin with. These are all communities. I think one is in Nebraska, one is in Iowa, and then the other one is in South Dakota.
Just to piggyback on that, what's the size, population size? Did you use them as peer communities, meaning that they have the same demographics for the most part?
Yes, ma'am. When you average all three of them out, this is what their averages equal. So plus-minus 5,000 of each of these would pretty much put you right in line. So after we define the opportunities from a data perspective, data can support a whole lot, but if we don't have the piece of real estate that works, they can't come. We can have data that says, "Hey, we need a new grocery store. There's a gap in it. Peer communities have four grocery stores, we only have two." But if there's not a piece of real estate where the economics work, or it's on the work, or it's on the wrong side of the road, then a retailer can't locate. So real estate is your product, and when you look for real estate online in Watertown, you don't find any from a retail perspective. You have to go into Google Earth or into Google Maps and drill down to identify those opportunities. So as far as making it the information available, it's really not. The WDC has done a good job with putting some properties online, but those are industrial-focused properties, because that's what they're going after. So making your product available is going to be incredibly important as you guys move forward. So our goal, when we come to the market, is to look at it from the eyes of a retailer, from the eyes of a developer, to identify the opportunities in the community. Where are they? What side of the road? What are the tenants that are going to be looking for that piece of dirt around those co-tenants, et cetera? And then packaging that material and getting it to them. So right now in Watertown, you have a great base of local, regional, and national retailers. You guys have done a great job with the development of Ninth Avenue, and from what the mayor's told me, and from walking around, talking to Mike at Harry's, and we tried to go by the brewery, they were closed on Monday, but you have a lot of momentum generating in the downtown, which is creating a very good consumer experience. You're getting people off the road for Ninth Avenue, but you're filtering them into downtown, which is incredibly important. So the no-brainer opportunities next to the Hobby Lobby, or the future Hobby Lobby with the mixed-use development in that space. Certainly, that's prime real estate, and conceptually, the city would like to see, I'm sure, TJ Maxx or some clothing retailers, as well as some Kohl's or more restaurants, I'm sure. The property owners, what they're influenced by is getting a deal done. It doesn't really matter to them who's coming, as long as they can get their rents, as long as they can get what they want for their land. So if we have the privilege of being your partner, our job would be to lock arms with you, and then to get with that property owner and feed them leads from retailers and restaurants that you'd like to see in your community and work hand-in-hand with them to maximize the opportunities for you, because this type of land is, they're not making more land in Watertown, right? So we have to maximize what we have. Obviously, you have some redevelopment across from the Dairy Queen, that's an opportunity. Redevelopment takes a little longer. I would assume that your current space that's land that's available for development would develop first before anything would be redeveloped, but certainly, as opportunities come, that could change. Then obviously, you have the land next to the Walmart. Doesn't have great visibility from Ninth Avenue, but it's, in every community that we work in, or 90% of them, when you have a Walmart, you have a shadow center next to them. A lot of the tenants that you typically see in the shadow center are already in Watertown, but I still think it's a great site for something. Haven't really dug in enough to know exactly what those opportunities would be. Then you look at the mall, obviously, opening in 1977 with space available. From what the mayor said, you guys have a good relationship with Lexington, and certainly there's challenges with any indoor mall, but it seems to be doing okay right now. I mean, it's still open, there's still tenants in there, which is more than you can say for most indoor malls throughout the country. But certainly, that's an opportunity that you have to consider when you're looking at the retail within the community. There's an outline of the community. So talking about vision and retail strategies, so our two principals, Robert Jolly and Meade Sillsby, this is in Mountain Brook, Alabama, so this is from Google Maps, and this is from 2010. So this is an area behind a 1950s-era shopping center, and they said, "You know what? Mountain Brook has great demographics. They're losing a lot of sales to communities next to them. We need to do a project here." So over the course of five years, they worked on this project. They said, "Hey, look, this is a great mixed-use development. We need a hotel, we need some restaurants, we need some clothing and apparel." And over five years, they were able to work with the city, and this is what it looks like today. It's actually 2016 now, and all of this has been built out, and that's a picture of it, the conceptual drawing. I couldn't find, I was out of town last week, or I was going to take a picture of it and bring it with me, but that's the vision that we have, and that's the track record we have of getting projects done. So it's taking vision, but it's putting action to it to make the project come out of the ground that's the differentiator. So in Watertown, you really do have a thriving downtown right now. Compared to most downtowns that I go to, you have very little vacancies, you have active entrepreneurs. Everybody that I ran into, from Mike to Jim, they had the same message, which is incredibly important. So when you talk about thriving downtowns, there's a couple of key things that you typically see, and a lot of them you guys have already started doing. One that you have in is the two-way streets, which you can still live on one-way streets, that's not a make-or-break. From what the mayor's told me, that's a debate within the community, but from everything that I've read and everything that we've seen, two-way streets help consumers more with pedestrian traffic, as well as just vehicle traffic getting back and forth. Having an entertainment district, the mayor's told me that you guys closed off a street, I think, on Thursdays, which is fantastic. A bike-share program. Essentially, they have little hubs where, if I'm a restaurateur, I can purchase a hub to put in front of my restaurant, and I can go rent a bike with a fob key and drive it around Watertown, and there's typically multiple hubs where you can drop it off. So I could start at Charlie's, and I could end at the rec center if I wanted to, in theory. The other thing is to make it kid- and family-friendly, so not just to focus on one demographic, but to focus on all demographics to attract them to downtown. The other thing is to direct them to downtown. So if I get off 29 and I'm on Ninth Avenue, direct me to downtown, just tell me that there's something to go do. Certainly, there are tools, there are apps like Yelp and others that can tell me that there's a really good restaurant in downtown, but signage, things of that nature helps to put traffic down there. Parking is power. You guys have already taken steps there, but having ample parking is critical for the downtown. Extending day and to night is also critical. Keeping all the stores open past 5:00 is very critical. And then managing for change, so looking into the future and saying, "Okay, if this happens, what are we going to have?" And going ahead and building that infrastructure and looking to the future. So in Augusta, Georgia, we have had the privilege of working with them now for over four years, and we have helped recruit a Dunkin' Donuts and a Witch Witch to their downtown, so two of the more national, regional brands. But in a partnership with Augusta, we're working in downtown, but we also ran into two retailers we were recruiting to downtown, and they really didn't see any sites they wanted, but they were interested in the market. So we were able to put them in other areas of the community. World of Beer was one of those, which is a national brand, and then Zoe's Kitchen, which is more of a southeastern regional brand, becoming more of a national brand every day. But we're also doing work in multiple other downtowns throughout the country and having great success. The last thing that we take into account during that discovery phase is community input. We want to know what you guys want, we want to know what we need to stay away from, et cetera. We want to become invested in your vision and put your vision as part of our strategy to go out and execute. Any questions about, I know I just covered a lot? All right, I'll keep plugging away. So the strategy is actual strategies that we can use to attract the targeted businesses to the community. This retail strategy is about a 70- to 100-page PowerPoint presentation, and it covers everything I just went over. It covers the highlights of all of the research, all of the real estate, and then the community input. This is an example of the most talked-about slides throughout the presentation, which are what are the prospects for the community. So not only do we tell you what the prospects are, but we tell you exactly what's going on within that sector of retail, so that you can be more educated when you have citizens come up and ask you, "Hey, why are we going after fast casual restaurants?" Well, because they're going to account for 40% of the growth of retail over the next two or three years. So again, this process takes about 90 days from start to finish, and that's, depending on the conference schedule, things of that nature, it's better for us to prepare for ICSC Chicago, which I believe is October 8th and 9th, than to spend time preparing a presentation for you. What we tell all of our clients is, "Let us prepare for that conference and then give you the presentation afterwards," which is more beneficial to you. So the proactive recruitment, again, everything I've just told you, I'm sure you've heard before. Again, finding the research is pretty easy. If somebody comes into your market and drives past that Hobby Lobby site and doesn't say that that mixed-use or that piece of land next to Hobby Lobby isn't a great piece of property, they probably don't know what they're doing at all. The difference between us and every other competitor in our market is the team that we put around you. It's the retail real estate experience, it's the deep rolodex of connections, and it's a long-term partnership that we hope to offer to you. So if we have the opportunity to work with you, Beth Miller, who's on top of this screen, she was on the Skype call with me earlier in June. She has 10-plus years of retail real estate experience. She's leasing and managing millions of square feet of retail space in the southeast and southwest of the United States, and she has a national network of industry relationships. Clay Kraft is a licensed real estate professional. He's in his course at Retail Strategies, has located dozens of retailers across the country, and he has developed a national network of industry relationships. Joe Kacharsky, he tells me it's 30-plus years, he won't give me the exact date or exact number of years, but he's located 350 groceries in his 30-year career. He's worked as the primary site selector for Costco in the southeastern United States. His claim to fame is that a Costco that he developed in the southeast was the cheapest Costco that they've ever developed, as far as price into the land and what it costs to develop. He's worked with ShopCo, Hometown, Save-A-Lot, et cetera. He knows everybody in this industry. Robert Jolly and Meade Sillsby, who are two owners, they've developed, leased and managed millions of square feet of retail space. They are principals of a brokerage house in Birmingham, Alabama, and that brokerage house did 501 transactions last year. So these guys are very knowledgeable of the deal-making process, how transactions work, what are the common obstacles of development, of leasing. In this industry, and in any industry, time kills all deals, so they know how to navigate these deals on your behalf. Lacey Beasley, who's our president and COO, she's been working with municipalities, helping them to attract retail for 10-plus years. She's assisted in locating millions of square feet of retail space at her time at the Shopping Center Group, which is a major tenant rep brokerage house based in Atlanta, Georgia. She has a close relationship with ICSC. Spoke at ICSC RECON, which is the largest retail real estate convention in the world, earlier this year, and she speaks at about 25 retail and statewide conferences each year. Wade Robinett is a 15-year real estate veteran, I'm kind of getting redundant here, but he's been a site selector, has developed shopping centers from the ground up. Ford Fitz has been our research guru for the past three years and has transitioned into a role as a retail developer or development coordinator, and he has an extensive knowledge of how to put these research packets together for these retailers, because at the retail level, you have a tenant rep broker, but you also have a director of research typically. So there's two different types of people that have to be given information in different ways. And then we have a marketing team with 25-plus years of experience together and have collaborated on 150-plus projects. So where I met the mayor earlier this year in Las Vegas, this is a picture of our booth, we had 375 meetings with retail real estate professionals at this conference. That's not including the meeting I had with the mayor. These are strictly meetings we had on behalf of our clients. If the mayor wanted to go each year for 30 years, that's how long it would take to duplicate what we did in two and a half days, just because of the size of our firm and what we're doing on behalf of our clients. But coming up are critical opportunities for Watertown. ICSC Texas, October 6th and 7th, Chicago, 19th and 20th, and then New York, which New York is the national show. RECON is the worldwide show, and New York is the national show. So those are opportunities we can get in front of retailers on your behalf to tell them about what's going on in Watertown, because as I told the mayor when I got here, it feels different when you're on the ground. It feels like you're somewhere. You're not just in another town. You're in Watertown, and that's a story that needs to be told. We create a marketing guide on your behalf that'll help sell the community. This answers the top 10 questions that a retailer is going to ask us, and on the flip side of the document is all the national and regional retailers identify, because one of the key things that a retailer is going to ask is, "Well, what's my co-tenancy going to be like?" So you can show them the site next to the Hobby Lobby, across from the Target, just down the road from Walmart, just down the road from the mall, et cetera. So after all that, what we hope is the results and the growth, and the strategy is going to be continuously updated. We don't hand you a final deliverable, because things are going to change. Your market's going to change, the mall is going to change, the land next to Hobby Lobby is going to be developed into something, and that's going to make us have to adjust our strategy, because your gaps are going to change. What you can attract is going to grow. In addition, retail expansion and the trends, what's going on in retail, that's going to change. A year ago, Sports Authority would have been a great, could have been a great candidate to come to Watertown. Now they're bankrupt, and they aren't doing any more stores. So as retailers close, as retailers open, as retailers announce expansions and smaller footprint stores, we have to include that. we have to include that into what we are doing and to how we are approaching the market on your behalf. In addition, we've become your research concierge. So if Jim Dugan wants me to run a mobile data study from his store, I'll do it for him and probably hand it to him that day. If Mike at Harry's wants me to do, you know, a five-minute drive time from his restaurant, I'll do it for him and hand it to him probably in the same day. You know, we become that arm of your community that can provide that information at a moment's notice. So I'm going to take you through, I went over this last time, but it's how we recruited Dick's Sporting Goods to Moline, Illinois. So again, the same process that we're going to take here, market analysis, strategy, proactive recruitment, then results in growth. You know, we saw there was a gap for sporting goods, Pure Communities had a major sporting goods retailer, and then there was a key piece of real estate, which happened to be in an indoor mall, that could support a big-box retailer. So what we did in the strategies identified Dick's as a major prospect. The real estate criteria for Dick's Sporting Goods, it headed to Moline, and the psychographics showed that Dick's was, Dick's consumers were in the market. So we then began the proactive recruitment, connecting with the mall manager, providing custom research and analytics, and leveraging our contacts at Dick's, and we helped push that deal across the finish line. I think it's doing about 10-plus million dollars in sales, added 50-plus jobs for the community, and it took an underutilized piece of real estate in an indoor mall and added a quality tenant to it. So again, same process that we propose to take here is what we would want, is what we did in Moline. And, you know, what the broker said is that, look, I represent, you know, land and space and multiple communities, but because Moline has partnered with Retail Strategies, they can be seen. They stand out above others because they're getting marketed better. Ray, who's our client in Moline, gave us the credit for closing the deal. You know, Dick's was interested in Moline before we got there. I'm not going to say that we, you know, were the reason Dick's located in Moline, but what we did was we created an environment for that deal to happen, which was not there before, and helped push that ball across the finish line. So key takeaways, you know, research is critical, but real estate's always going to win. You know, research can support it, but it has to support the real estate, it doesn't work the other way. Retail recruitment is a challenge, it's economic development, but it is a commercial real estate function. You align yourself with retail real estate professionals that can help you navigate the deal process. Retail recruitment is a marathon. I wish I could tell you that we were going to have, you know, something in the market in the next six months. We can help push something that's right there over the line, but as far as locating a new retailer, it's an 18-to-36-month process. With the new retail that you guys have seen recently, I'm sure you're aware of that timeframe. But you know, right now, 70% of retailers are going to expand this year, so it's a great time to get in the game. You know, when a retailer is expanding, they'll do a new store in your market, but when a retailer and there's an economic downturn, they're not going to do any new stores, but if they have a store in Watertown, they can find a way to make that store successful by, you know, moving around their goods and price points, et cetera. So it's a great time to be recruiting retail. But, you know, in closing, you know, we went to the Redland Art Center, the mayor drove me around the ring, where the rinks are going to be built and the ball fields. We spoke with Nancy Turbeck and the law firm and how they renovated that old post office. And, you know, Watertown has an incredible story, and there is a lot of potential here. And we'd love to be your partner to take that story out and get it in front of people, investors, retailers, and restaurants that should be considering the market. With that, I'll thank you again for your time and answer any questions that you have for me.
Matt, roughly how many, and I realize it varies, roughly how many communities are you working with in any one particular time?
We have 115 communities under contract currently. We have 30 members to our team, I think that's about four-to-one client-to-staff ratio. You know, we've been in business for four and a half, five years now, and we have 30 individuals. Our competitors have been in business for 12-plus years and, you know, don't have the manpower that we do. We believe in providing a hands-on service. We understand that, you know, what we're doing, it takes people getting that in front of retailers, it takes connections, it takes contacts. Anybody can send out a mass email, the mayor is a member of ICSC, he can look up any retailer in the country in their database and find their email address, but it doesn't give them the personal relationship that allows him the time to explain what the opportunity is in the market.
Just an observation, with that many that you're working with, that when you want time and roughly 30 members within your group, does that allow you enough time to adequately work with each individual one?
Oh, yes, sir, absolutely.
So Matt, do you assign a specific project manager? And if you do that, do you know who that would be for us from your team?
Yes, sir, it was Beth Miller, and I'll go back to that slide that has our whole team. It would be Beth Miller, she would be assigned to the community, as well as Clay Kraft and Ford Fitz and the executive team. At any one time, I mean, you'll have 15-plus people having a hand in this partnership on a regular basis.
Could you, go ahead.
That 115 communities, what's the breakout population-wise, what's that look like?
Great question. 33% are under 20,000, another 40% are between 20,000 and 60,000, and then the remainder, 17% is above, is above 60,000 in population. So Watertown is right in the sweet zone of what we look at. And the reason why is because, you know, when you look at Watertown, I think I said this earlier, if you go on Loop Med or any of these retail real estate sites, the product that Watertown has isn't available online. So essentially, it's not that you're being overlooked, but if I'm a developer or a retailer or a broker, I don't get paid more money by going and finding something off the beaten path, something that's not visible to me. I get paid, you know, my fee by locating a retailer. So the easier it is for me to locate in a certain place, that's where I'm going to go, because that's what I'm incentivized to do. But essentially, a market like Watertown, you know, if you're properly marketed, I think that you're going to see a lot of growth, because I think that, again, that there's a lot of potential and a lot of good pieces of property that are available.
Matt, what community are you currently working with in South Dakota?
We are not working with any communities in South Dakota. Again, we're a five-year-old firm, we've grown out of Birmingham, so we've grown in a very structured manner. We've added five people to our team this year, and those people, again, have a retail, real estate, or municipal background. We don't hire people out of college that come in and don't know what they're doing. Certainly there is a learning process in any position. But this is our first real reach into South Dakota, and we think this is the right community to do it with because of what the opportunities are in this community.
Can you elaborate, I mean, can you provide us with any information, any data of successes that you've had with similar-sized communities? And who you have brought to their communities for retail?
Absolutely, so I mean, you know, when you're talking about 175,000 in a trade area, I would go back to Augusta, Georgia. I believe they're going to have over 100,000 in their trade area, and we helped locate a Zoe's Kitchen, a World of Beer, a Witch Witch. Well, in addition, you know, Jack's Beach, Florida, which is just south of Jacksonville Beach, is going to have a very large trade area as well. We've been, we were able to recruit another Broken Egg, which is a fast casual breakfast and lunch concept, as well as a Whole Foods located in the market that we targeted. Lake City, Florida, we've helped recruit Jimmy John's and others. They're much like you, they're, you know, located on an interstate at a main and main. You know, they probably trade, you know, 60,000, Florida's more of a densely populated area. We've helped recruit them there, and then there's several others that I'm sure if I go back and ask the guys that are, you know, doing that on a daily basis that I can provide you.
So you could provide us a list of similar-sized communities and the successes, the folks that you have brought to those communities?
Yes, sir, and I think I've probably even connected the mayor with a couple of communities that are similar to you already, where we've had success and that are renewing our agreements as well.
Thank you.
This would be your first step into South Dakota. Our number one industry is agriculture, number two is tourism. How's that spin into your process that you guys use?
Certainly, so it's looking at obviously the type of consumer. So an agriculture consumer is different than, you know, a metropolitan consumer. Joe Kacharsky, he runs our Green Bay office, he's been doing work in South Dakota. He knew Ninth Avenue because he's been here before. So we're familiar with, you know, the state, even though we haven't worked here as Retail Strategies. Tourism, we're working in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, and we've just delivered a tourism packet to them based upon the mobile data collection. So showing the, where consumers are coming from on a monthly basis and how that changes over the course of a year. So being able to package that for a retailer and show them that, you know, what they're looking at in base population and trade area can change. I think we were at the, Julie, I think, yeah, Julie at the Redland Art Center was telling us at how many visitors they have per year, and I know they have a logbook, but I'm sure we could do the mobile data collection from there as well to show exactly what's going on.
How did, with your quick drive through our community today, did, you know, some of the companies that you have a relationship with, did you say, wow, how do they not have this company? Did any companies come to mind right away? I know it's early, but...
It's early, and as soon as I say something, it could get in the paper that, oh, so-and-so's coming to town. That's always, exactly, that's always fun. So, you know, across from Target, I mean, TJ Maxx, Kohl's, sometimes an organic-type grocer. Those are three that came up immediately. I didn't see Aldi, they may be here, though. That's one that typically would be in a market like this. So those are just some of the national brands. Chipotle was one that I didn't see, that I was like, you know, thought that that was something. Obviously Qdoba's here, so that could be a reason. They got here first, some of those other fast casual concepts as well.
I think one of the things, Matt, that has intrigued me about your company is that it's more of a partnership with the city. It's, you're bringing these companies, I mean, you're marketing Watertown, and you're working closely with Watertown. It isn't like you just sent us out a letter and say, well, you should contact Joe at Trader Joe's and/or something to that effect. You're not doing that, you're actually working with these companies, setting up the appointments. We could have the meeting in Las Vegas or New York or wherever it might be. Is that where I'm understanding that to work?
Absolutely, you know, we refer to ourselves as an extension of city staff. When we have our kickoff call, which I guess we're getting close to football season, so that phrase works pretty well now, but when we have our kickoff call, you know, one of the things we close with is that we are an extension of you. So whatever needs, whatever questions you have, you're going to have access to Beth, Clay, Ford, myself. You're going to have all of our cell phone numbers, you're going to have all of our email addresses. We have a project management site that you can email us all at one time if you so choose to do so. But we want you to look at us as an extension of your city staff, and that's what we want to become. And again, this is not a project. Projects are things that start and finish. This is a partnership, and we hope that, you know, our year-to-year, three-year agreement is a 20-year agreement. But we understand that we have to provide value for you guys to renew our contract for the second year. And then in that second year, we better provide more value. So that's what we're here to do and hope to have the privilege to do so.
And how often do you meet with, like, the city, for instance? There's probably one or two of us that would probably be on this, you know, working for retail, and then we would be having meetings with you. How often do you have those?
Whenever you want. I'm on a call tomorrow morning, they asked, one of my new clients, Ovita of Florida, sent us an email and said, hey, we're going, Florida ICSC is in three weeks from today, it's the largest conference for cities in Florida, and they had an opportunity and said, hey, can we hop on a call tomorrow? And we said, absolutely, what time works for you? And obviously, we've got to coordinate schedules, but 9:00 AM ended up working, 8:00 AM are central time, so that'll be a good wake-up call. But it's whenever you need them. As far as being in the market, because I don't want to provide you a pricing structure that says we're going to be here four times in the first year and go ahead and input that price into our pricing structure. There are three trips, one per year, that are set out in the agreement. Any other trips that you'd like for us to make are just paid for by the city, reimbursed for travel expenses, et cetera. But, you know, with ICSC Recon and that trip, we'll be connecting with you face-to-face at least twice a year. But again, with Skype, with conference calls, with all of those other opportunities, we're always accessible. And again, the way our contract is written, the way our project, our partnerships work is, if you want a written report to provide to council, all that we ask is five business days' notice, so that we can prepare that. We have all this information in notes and in Basecamp and in all these places, but putting it together in something that will stamp our name on is something that we just ask to have a little time so that we can make it pretty and hand it to you, as well as, you know, we don't want to give too much away, so we have to make sure that the information can be shared in a public setting, and that takes a little time to go through and come through that.
I thought it was interesting today, when we were driving around and we were looking at different areas, and, you know, we went up through the community center and off to the east there on that, and you just, you know, I could see wheels spinning. It was something, you know, I could see a vision of something going over here, or something on this particular side, or a village going on, just something to that effect, and it was exciting to take that spin.
Absolutely, and, yeah, it was great. I mean, what you guys have going on from a quality-of-life perspective with the new community center with, I think it's the new elementary school? I mean, that's incredible, and, you know, retailers, their primary job, what they want to do is make money, but those things do matter. I mean, you know, having that quality of life is incredibly important, and I think it's going to help you attract citizens as you continue to move forward, because millennials, what they say they're going to do, and I told Craig earlier, because he was talking about how his primary job focuses, and I said, well, you know, millennials don't really move for a job anymore, they move where there's quality of life. So when you combine Craig's efforts and what he's doing, what the WDC is doing, with the retail that you have, not only the national retailers that you're attracting like Hobby Lobby, but, you know, the brewery and Harry's and Common Ground and Charlie's, and you put all those things together, you're going to be a very attractive place to live for the foreseeable future. And if you continue to build on that, Watertown's going to continue to grow and become an even better community, and just adds to the amenities that you already have.
So Matt, you said it would take 30 months maybe to connect with somebody?
Yes, sir, a real estate transaction could take anywhere from 18 to 36 months. A retailer, I'm going to use an example, Dunkin' Donuts can move a lot quicker than a Target can, just because of the size of what's going on. With the opportunities that you have with that land, you know, next to the Hobby Lobby, I would assume that 36 months would be a good timeframe for something to come out of the ground there. You have other infill opportunities throughout the community, you know. I do think that we'll see success sooner, but I can't guarantee that. If I could guarantee you that, I wouldn't be sitting here, we'd just be up here developing all the land. But, you know, our job is to identify tenants that are interested in the market, that are going to add quality of life and not cannibalize the current businesses that you have here, but maximize the opportunity by continuing to have the trade area that you have. I mean, certainly you have Brookings to the south that if they recruited, you know, ex-retailer that you had, that you were drawing people from south to come up here and shop, if they've cut them off there, then that diminishes your trade area. So we want to continue to keep that trade area as large as it is, if not even larger, by attracting more quality tenants to the community.
One of the things that you had mentioned while we were over at the Goss, and we were looking in the theater, and you said something about how you would like to see a group of developers come in, that you would bring in, fly them into Watertown on ADI, and, yeah, y'all caught that, right? Fly them into Watertown on ADI and just take them for a tour of Watertown, so they understand what's here and what we have to offer. And you've done that in other communities.
Well, I use an example of not where we did it, but a developer that actually, Beth Miller, who would be the primary point of contact for you all, a company she used to work with, Bayer, which is a development firm and develops major shopping centers throughout the country. They're opening one in Louisville, Kentucky, and they flew in a lot of the retailers that were looking at the site and took them on a whiskey tour and all the, you know, things about Louisville. So as I was saying, there we go, so as I was saying to the mayor, I said, you know, you have such a good story to tell, and if somebody's going to come all this way, it'd be good to have something in place where you say, hey, you're coming into town to look at the site. If you don't want to meet with us, still go check out Charlie's or go check out, you know, uptown or downtown, I'm not sure which one we're calling, downtown. So go check out these places and show them Watertown, because again, as I told the mayor, when you walk into Charlie's and when you walk into, you know, Harry's and, I wish we could have walked into the brewery, you feel like, you don't feel like you're in Watertown, you feel like you're in a place, you feel, you know, having that sense of place, and I think that that can help sell the community and position you ahead of others.
I'd like to just, again, piggyback off all the discussion. I think bringing people into town to just kind of walk around and get a feel for the community or drive around, but taking, you know, Charlie's maybe as a starting point. I think if we were able to provide the visitors that are coming from the development or whatever with perhaps a business building inventory, you know, what's empty, what do we have, how big is it? How many stories, is there places for people to live above it, things like that? If we were able to put together a business, or, excuse me, a building inventory like that, would that be something that, you know, here, go take a look, and we may even be able to coordinate with some of the building owners to get them to be able to give a tour? be able to give a tour. I mean, so is that something that sounds like, you know?
That's a fantastic point and one that I should have made earlier. When we do our real estate analysis, we identify these properties, and then once we identify the property, we begin calling on those property owners. Or if it has a sign, we call on the broker who is listing the property to see what the square footage is, what are they asking for rents? Is it triple-net? Get all the deal terms? Because that's what a retailer is going to need. If you don't have that information available, you're just creating another step, and you don't need to create another step. So it's a great point. When somebody comes to the community, they're going to know what size of facility they want, within, give or take, 1,000 square feet at most. So having, that's how we're going to get them to the community, to be quite honest. No one's going to come to Watertown just to drive around and try to find a space. It's going to be because we showed them an area of town that they should be interested in, and then they're going to fly here and figure it out. And it may be on ADI, or it may, more than likely, on a private jet, but you guys will be able to take care of them.
Kind of a follow-up to that. I see the badges on your screen and the companies you work with, and it's an impressive list, and there are some of those that we would like to have here. Contrast that, though, with downtown. What can you do downtown? Because it's a different animal, you know, traffic counts, you know, not next to the Hobby Lobby, all those kinds of things. Because, I mean, we'd like to see some things happen downtown.
Certainly, and that's a great question. And your first comment, the logos that were underneath our pictures, those are retailers and brokerage houses that we worked for before coming to retail strategies. Those are not ones that we work with intimately. Retail Strategies works 100% with municipalities and public entities across the country. Okay. Your question was about the downtown, I'm sorry. I got up early this morning, took three flights to get here. Ninth Avenue is how you're going to get them off the interstate, having the big-box retailer or the name-brand retailer that they can't get in their own community, and then if you can funnel them into the downtown. As far as national, regional opportunities in downtown, there certainly are some. What happens, though, is a lot of times, the economics of building a new facility is cheaper than retrofitting a current space in the downtown. There are some retailers that are more apt to do that, like a sandwich shop where there's not a whole lot that you need to do. But again, in Augusta, Georgia, we've been able to help and create Dunkin' Donuts and Witch Witch, again, two that doesn't cost much for them to retrofit. So those opportunities are going to be more limited. Certainly, we're going to go after them on your behalf. But again, it's just being realistic with you instead of just blowing smoke and telling you something.
I was going to ask if anybody in the audience has any, a quick question? We're kind of running close on time here. Anybody out there got a question they want to ask Matt while he's here? It's, he's wide open. No? Hearing none? That public part's closed? No? You guys got any more questions? Otherwise...
I've got one more, Mayor. Matt, you've been in existence about five years, you said roughly? But you've got people that have a lot of experience. There must be, I mean, are you doing something different to attract the team that you have from other areas in the industry? I mean, are you doing something unique out there? Or, because I am impressed with the experience that your team members have.
It's the culture of our company. Our phrase is, if I say I will, I will. We're people of our word. If I'm sitting here promising you we're going to do X, Y, and Z, better bet that we're going to do X, Y, and Z. You know, all of our partnerships, I believe, of our 115, I think we've had full-service clients, about 135. So 115 are still under contract with us today, and even the ones that have left us for whatever reasons, they're still going to tell you that we did exactly what we said we were going to do and that we represented their community in a first-class way. You know, certainly, you know, we don't ever want to lose a client. That's something we don't take lightly. We do exit interviews with every client to make sure that we're always improving. But luckily, we don't have to do too many exit interviews, because we do exactly what we say we're going to do. However, you know, our contracts are year-to-year. If it was up to us, they'd be 30 years long, and there's no way either of us could get out of it, because we'd be great partners to one another. But, you know, the reality is, there's economic changes. Cities have limited budgets, and we understand that. But our job is to provide value, to make this an investment, not a cost, and be your partner for a long, long time.
I got one, Steve. It might have been asked when we had the Skype, but you said Watertown's the only one in South Dakota, and I know we've asked this of some of the other ones, is we would feel uncomfortable if you were representing somebody else close by, because then it gets to be a little bit too, who are you going to choose, Dale?
Yes, sir. So we would obviously exclude certain communities that Brookings, I'm sure, would be one that you would want to exclude and not sure of others. But we would either spell those out in the contract or put a radius ring. Typically, we just spell them out, because it's just easier that way. Makes you guys feel more comfortable, and we understand that.
Yeah, we were thinking Aberdeen, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, you know.
Yeah. Minneapolis, yeah. All those, right?
I'm just throwing it out there, okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions, you guys? Matt, thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
It was a very good presentation. We appreciate it. I'm sure we're going to be in touch.
Absolutely. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. No, as I told the mayor, you know, when he asked me if I could Skype, I said, well, sure, I can Skype. But then, you know, I wanted to be here. I wanted to put my feet on the ground. I wanted to see the community, because if you guys are going to give us the opportunity to sell you, I want to make sure that I can come back and tell Beth and to tell Clay and others, you know, what's going on here. And, you know, as I told the mayor, we love going to places where we can come in and do our boots-on-the-ground analysis, but also spend the night and have a good time. And it definitely looks like we can do that in Watertown. So we're excited about the opportunity to hopefully be your partner. But I gave all of you guys my card, so if you have any questions that you didn't get to ask or think about tomorrow morning, give me a call. I'm always available.
Just quickly, did you get a chance to look at the H2O2O Vision Plan that the community did a few years ago?
No, sir, I have not.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. And what we could do is for, I think that's on our website, is it not?
Either ours or the developer company.
Yeah. Either on WDC, Community Foundation, it's out there. It's on yours, Craig? H2O?
I don't think it's on ours yet.
Okay. So if you go on that community center, one, Watertown, you'll find it. It's a great report.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
All right. See ya.
Thank you all.
Okay. You know, I don't have a lot. I wrote something down here if we have time.